All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order November 17th, 2025 at 5:15 PM. Roll call, Jessica Crosby.
Here.
Dale Johnson.
Here.
Tony Corby.
Here.
Tina Sather.
Here.
Roxanne Sogusadich.
Here.
Joanne Smith, here. Beth Schmon.
Here.
Joe Sullivan, Max Yusso. Not yet, all right, save the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, um, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Rox will second.
Okay, motion by Tina and second by Rox. Um, any discussion?
I just wanna touch base on number on the committee and administrative reports. Where was Lauren's issue?
What number is that?
Oh, sorry, yeah, oh, the consent agenda number, I'll go back.
Okay.
You good or you?
I'm good.
Oh, okay.
I also just wanna say the updated change that we moved, um, the leave request to an action item. It was originally on the consent agenda.
Okay, you have a motion by Tina and a second by Rox, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Right, open forum, Elks Student of the Month, November.
You gotta come up and stand in front of us, Piper.
Okay, so, um, one of the November Students of the Month is Piper Moss and she was nominated by Mr. John Sandberg. It's my pleasure to recognize Piper as the Elks Student of the Month for November. She, Piper is an exceptional student whose dedication, enthusiasm, and positive spirit make her a valued member of our school community. Throughout her time at FHS, she's taken on a rigorous academic schedule, enrolling in numerous college and schools classes, um, including honors classes. Her, some of her coursework include concurrent enrollment in English, concurrent enrollment in understanding literature, mathematical reasoning, college algebra, world history to 1500, world history since 1500, economics, pre-calculus, introduction to American politics, and introduction to creative writing, and introduction to public speaking, all of those are concurrent enrollment classes. Her commitment to challenging herself academically is evident through both the depth and breadth of these courses. In addition to her academic achievements, Piper has been highly involved in school activities. She's been a cheerleader for three years, participated in a marching band for two years, and has been a member of the Minnesota Honor Society for two years. She's also been involved in concert band for seven years, served as a football team manager this year, and has participated in dance since the age of five. Her involvement across athletics, music, leadership, and the arts reflects her well-rounded talents and willingness to contribute to multiple areas of school life. Outside of school, Piper enjoys snacking, listening to music, practicing chairs, and spending time with her cats. These hobbies reflect her energetic and fun-loving personality. After high school, Piper plans to attend the College of St. Scholastica to pursue her physical therapy. Her compassion, patience, and strong work ethic makes this a natural and promising path. Mr. Sandberg says about Piper, "Piper is a true model student and well-deserving as Student of the Month for November. She is prepared, hardworking, dedicated, and very organized. All of these qualities allow her to be very successful in the classroom. The work she produces is always quality work and often goes above and beyond what is expected. She is also a very kind, compassionate, and caring person who is always willing to help others. She's a true role model for other students in the building. Piper's leadership, kindness, and academic excellence make her a remarkable student and a valued part of FHS. We are proud to honor her as November Student of the Month and celebrate her many contributions to our school. Thank you, Piper."
Great.
And our other November Student of the Month for Elks is Kyle Kramer. If Kyle could come up? It's my pleasure to recognize Kyle as the Elks Student of the Month for November. Kyle is an exemplary student whose dedication, curiosity, and strong work ethic have made him a standout leader within our school community. Throughout his time at FHS, he's pursued an exceptionally rigorous academic program, enrolling in a wide range of college and schools courses. His coursework includes concurrent enrollment in English, concurrent enrollment in understanding literature, mathematical reasoning, college algebra, world history to 1500, world history since 1500, economics, pre-calculus, calculus one, introduction to American politics, introduction to creative writing, and introduction to public speaking, all of those being concurrent enrollment classes, college and schools classes. His commitment to academic excellence is evident in both the depth and variety of his studies. Beyond the classroom, Kyle has been actively involved in basketball, baseball, and Minnesota Honor Society. His participation in these activities demonstrates not only his leadership, but also his ability to balance a demanding academic schedule with meaningful extracurricular contributions. When he's not in school, Kyle enjoys going to the gym, writing short stories, and playing basketball. These interests reflect his motivation, creativity, and drive to continually challenge himself, whether intellectually, athletically, or personally. Looking to the future, Kyle plans to pursue a degree in aerospace engineering, a field that aligns perfectly with his curiosity, discipline, and desire to take on complex challenges. There is no doubt that the same qualities that have made him an exceptional student at FHS will serve him well as he takes this exciting next step. Mr. Sandberg says about Kyle, "I'm proud to honor Kyle as the November Student of the Month. He exemplifies everything a successful student must do to thrive at FHS. He works extremely hard to produce quality work. Every day, he demonstrates the qualities of a dedicated student. He asks questions, he questions things, he is organized, he is prepared for class, and he shows a genuine interest in his learning. In Kyle, we have a true role model for other students at FHS. Kyle's commitment to excellence, both academically and personally, make him a deserving recipient of this recognition. We are proud to celebrate him as November Student of the Month and look forward to all that he will accomplish in the future."
All right. If there's no other public open forum, all right, we'll move to committee and administrative reports. Do we have a student representative report?
Here, not this one.
Nope, okay. Um, Mrs. What, do you wanna go since?
Good evening, everyone. We recently held a very successful Scholastic Book Fair, um, which was sponsored by our sixth grade teachers. Um, this serves as a fundraiser for the sixth grade class trip. Um, they've also been selling pies and chocolates and they're doing an excellent job with their fundraising efforts. Um, they've been working really hard to bring back this wonderful tradition and the Minnesota Booklets are in progress. So, we're very excited about that. Uh, for Veterans Day, our students created cards and letters. Um, they watched videos and read books and they learned more about this important holiday. Uh, Mrs. Talmage delivered the many cards and letters to the BFW on our behalf. Uh, we held our monthly Bronco Pride Assembly. This will be held each month. Um, the first one was held at the end of October and we'll host another one in November. Um, teachers recognized students for showing respect. Um, and we honored our Students of the Month for Falls Elementary from grades K through six. Uh, we are now focusing on responsibility this month. I wanted to share with you, um, a wonderful donation from a community partner, Hasbargen Customs. Um, Kyra Hasbargen donated, um...
Oh, isn't that cute?
...T-shirts in all sizes for our students.
Wow.
And these wonderful, um, little bags, little boas, and lanyards. And so, we have been really, um, really enjoying giving those out to students and then they are wearing them to show their Bronco pride, um, which we love. And we also are really working, um, with our Bronco pride store. Now remember, kids earn tickets for demonstrating respect and responsibility, um, and things that we're looking for each month. And so, we have, um, we're trying to come up with experiences as well. So, uh, Mr. Ringhofer has donated, um, some sports passes so we can get the kids out to go into all the activities and bring your family, bring your friends. And then we also have, um, this is a ticket to have lunch with your teacher. Um, and then I'm also doing, um...
Love it.
...lunch with the Students of the Month. We have a special lunch in December and January, we're planning hot cocoa cookies. So, we're gonna try to have some fun events just to celebrate, um, our leaders and celebrate the wonderful behavior that we're seeing. Uh, let's see, um, we will be having an assembly tomorrow for Native American Heritage Month. Um, this is organized by our Indian Education Department. We'll have two different sessions, one for K through two and one for three through six. Um, warm, warm winter clothing, uh, we just wanna say is always welcome for anyone wanting to donate with warm winter clothes. Uh, we met today to discuss our, our plan for the cold weather coming. We just wanna make sure all our kids have warm weather gear, um, and so if anyone, you know, if any families feel like they need something, they can always reach out to the school, our social worker, Jordan. Um, they can reach out to me or any of our staff, um, and we'd be happy to find warm clothing for kids. Um, we continue to focus on high-impact teaching strategies. Um, we're placing a strong emphasis on phonics and also math fundamentals. We're releasing that, we need to get back to basics with our math. So, that has been our focus most recently. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, our student enrollment numbers are at four sixty. We're up from four fifty-six last month, so we're at four students, um, and then we do have a couple more new students, um, that will be starting after Thanksgiving break, December 1st. Um, and then I just, we really have been getting a lot of calls lately from families who are interested in, um, checking out what we have to offer, um, both at Falls High School and the ALC. Uh, we do have a waiting list right now for ALC. We are up to thirty-one students in our ALC, so they are all working really hard in there, but, um, that's getting to be a lot of, a lot of kids, so we're, we have a waiting list right now and we'll kinda monitor that and as things progress, um, we can maybe let more kids in. We'll just have to keep monitoring how that's going. Um, we are in the process of establishing a robotics team this year at the high school and tomorrow we'll be lucky enough to have, uh, the Warroad Robotics Team is actually coming up with some of their robots and they'll be here at lunch to just kinda generate some interest with the students and show their robots and then they will do presentations for students in some through ninth grade who are interested and then a separate presentation for students in tenth through twelfth grade who are interested in joining the robotics team. So, that'll be new and coming back and, um, that's where you see some of those donations coming in. Uh, we're working with, um, Ken Rosin from the University of Minnesota and getting some of this established. Um, and we have a, a coach, um, his name is John Brubaker. I believe he just, uh, started working at Border GM, so, um, he was in robotics in Michigan. So, that's a passion for him, so we're excited to get that off the ground and running. Um, hopefully we get, um, a few kids that are interested in, in doing that. Um, we also have a new student who reached out to me who is interested in seeing if we could do a musical. So, I have no idea about running a musical, but I was given a few names to, um, reach out to like Darcy. Not to put anybody on the spot. So, um, I will be doing some behind-the-scenes investigation and I'm gonna meet with her, uh, next week to see kinda what her ideas are and brainstorm how we can make something like that happen. They did that at her old school and that was something she really liked, so we'll hear her out and see what we can, can offer. Uh, I know it does get hard and tricky when we don't have choir, but if there's still opportunities that we can offer to our kids, I think that's, um, great. So, um, let's see, we have the same assembly tomorrow and our, our, um, groups will be in seventh through ninth grade and tenth through twelve, and that's the reason why they're alternating with the, um, robotics team as well in those grade levels. Um, and then behind the scenes of our PBAS team is getting established, well, our team is established. We're getting our, um, Bronco Power Store up and running. We need to purchase the items for that so that we can get going with that, but that will hopefully be going soon. Um, I know kids have been asking about that, so we'll get that up and running. And then, um, we've still just been doing a lot of work on trimesters behind the scenes, like we're looking at that and looking at, um, more opportunities to bring electives and more college and schools classes through trimesters. Um, we did talk to student council about, uh, some of this potential and there are a lot of kids that are very excited and a lot of tenth graders who have told me that if we are able to offer an AA, they would stay here, that they were planning to go to post-secondary, but if we can offer the AA, they want to stay here and have that experience. So, I think that, um, offering more electives and, and having AA in-house will be huge and then, of course, being able to offer more CTE pathways, like we're exploring right now, like could we potentially offer a certificate in World on Fire Fighting? Um, could that be an option for us, so kids could be here actually with that certificate? Um, we're looking at, like I talked about when we did that walkthrough, like the, um, mass communication classes or media communications, like can we get a certificate that also doubles as college credit? Same with the World on Fire Fighting, that could be a CTE class and, um, uh, our college class as well. So, you can, um, kill two birds with one stone and when we can have a key career pathways, we also do get some reimbursement, um, from the state in that aspect too, so that's nice too. But, I mean, really at the end of the day, we really need to get more electives in the building for our students. Um, we want them to wanna be here and want them to have more opportunities. So, um, looking at the trimester, it's been pretty positive. We have a listening session, we, I have one tonight, but I'm in one, um, staff member come. We have another one on Thursday, so hopefully some more staff members come. We've talked with the leadership team about it, um, so I'm hoping that we can look at that and really, um, you know, look at potentially MOU soon because it will really be a very large endeavor. So, I'm hoping that we'll be able to kinda separate that a little bit from any of those negotiations this year and so that gets tricky sometimes, but hopefully we can separate that so we can really be plentiful and really start building that schedule and really putting electives in front of kids and having them register so that we can show them what opportunities we have and we can produce good courses too, if we can give teachers enough time to be plentiful. So, trying to be methodical with all of those things, yes, for sure.
I'm just wondering about the AA. Do you have a timeline, do you think, for AA? Are you thinking a year from now or?
No, I think actually, well, if we're able to offer a trimester schedule, we're actually able to offer more college, um, classes then because we could offer one every twelve weeks then, one every trimester. So, when Stephanie won, uh, won Appa, I think that's how you said her last name, was here from LSC. Several of the teachers met with her and were interested in pursuing and we have a lot of teachers who are already credentialed to teach some of those online, or those college and school classes. Um, and so, we have the partnership agreement with LSC. So, and the requirement from them is that fifteen of the credits come from LSC. So, as we move to have more partnerships with them, more classes, college and schools classes, that would not be an issue. And then like I said, with trimester, we can offer more, um, college and school classes because when we start to look at trimesters, that opens up our scheduling flexibility. Even though, um, teachers would only teach four out of five, it, um, it adds one elective to each core area and then we can also, um, it opens up some of those core teachers that weren't otherwise opened up because some of the classes are running only two trimesters versus all year long. So, it gives us more scheduling flexibility and, um, you do some other different things, like maybe you offer world history on a rotation, like, um, for, and like, like maybe we offer world history next year and the US history the following year, and we keep doing that rotation. And so, you can kinda schedule across four periods maybe instead of, or five periods and it gives us just more scheduling flexibility because when you have a small school, you get really, um, dialed into just specific schedules that you can take, right? And so, by being able to offer more of those electives or more of those college and school classes through trimesters, um, we could potentially have that, I mean, we could have the AA next year because it's really that partnership, right? And so, the classes that we can offer here, they can take online through PSDO, through LSC and get that partnership. But, we're very close to having, um, every, every license area for the AA credential here in the building. We'll be seeking out, um, some potential credentialing options for UMD too, to kinda, because they have different requirements. Um, so, that would be out of the track for some of our people who aren't able to be credentialed through LSC at this moment because they maybe haven't finished some of their outside content area classes. Um, so they may qualify through UMD, so we could have a variety of, of courses offered through different colleges and partnerships.
That's really exciting, that, I'm, I'm really happy that you're doing so much work on that.
It is, I mean, it would, it would probably be, I mean, you have to be aware, it will be probably smaller classes at first that we'll need to run as we get it going, but I think if we commit to that and to those kids that we would have this and they understand and see that the, the process is going to play out because they did have an AA here in school several years ago and then that went away, but if we commit to that and we say we're going to have that, any of those kids will stay. And will we still do some? Yep, we will, but a lot of them aren't coming back and a lot of them do wanna be here and even when they have open hours, you find them here. So, um, trimesters, we'll also kind of tackle that too because we've got some kids that are, you know, only taking like two classes, the seniors, and that's just not real life. Talked about that with some employers too. So, we're working on expanding our work base on the options. We had a good meeting with PCA the other day and, um, we're having a meeting with the state just to find out like what we need to do to be able to get kids into industry partnership because there's so many safety, um, restrictions and things like that. But there are things that we can do and, um, different trainings we can offer to make those partnerships happen. So, I think that's important.
Wow, thanks.
Any other questions?
I have a question. So, how would that impact when you said you're working towards bringing it back next year so people can get their AA? Like AA, like the eleventh graders that are doing college and school classes now?
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to look at their pattern to see what they've already taken and what they have left. I mean, of, some of them probably would be really close and if we were, maybe if we're offering five courses, maybe they could take another course online or something. I mean, we could probably look at individual kids like that and see how that works out, but also being able to offer three college courses, uh, over a year for one teacher, say, or, you know, in a subject area. Because right now they can only really teach two, right? Um, so, by being able to offer more, they might be able to fill out those goal areas. It'll be, everybody will really have an individual plan based on what they've taken and what their goal was. Um, and the other thing to look at is that it's not always just like getting the AA. Sometimes it's like the Minnesota transfer curriculum, which I think is forty credits, but AA is sixty credits. So, we have some different options, but we'll at least just give them some more flexibility and some more exposure to some of those different opportunities and then, of course, just more electives, um, to be able to offer because it's really hard to be able to tell kids like we only have so many classes. And some of our classes by the time they're done with tenth grade, they're almost done with all their shop electives that we offer and that's really hard to, I mean, why, why do they want to be here as juniors and seniors?
Yeah, good point.
So, yeah, so there's some exciting things in the work. So, can we make them all happen and come to fruition, right? So, I think it's pretty important for our kids though and our school culture and community.
Thank you.
Okay, I have the community report. Um, just a small early education update. We currently have sixty-five students enrolled and we have one opening in all-day, everyday, four-year-old preschool. For some reason, we just can't fill this spot and we're just looking for one four-year-old to sneak up. Um, and then we have one opening in three-year-old Thursday, Friday preschool. Um, and then community education report, we had driver training at the end of October. Um, and we had twenty-two participants, so it was a good turnout, life bar certifications. We had seven students actually who took the class, which was really exciting to add to our roster and our availability to open the pool. Um, so hopefully we can get these kids trained, uh, most of them are our students. And then I'm in the works of creating a public, or a, a community education advisory council. Um, so my dates are tentative, but they're Wednesdays at one to two PM, um, so quarterly, but it's starting Wednesday, December ten, and the next one would be February four. Um, recently, me and Angela, we went down to the Midchee and visited with Rachel Ombel, which was incredible. Um, we went to the Paul Bunyan Center, which is their like early education building and it's like the coolest building on earth. It's like open the doors and it's like this welcoming space and like that's the vision for West End too is like creating more of like a homey feel where families are like welcomed. Um, it was just a really, really, really cool space. So, I'm like excited to hopefully send my staff down there because I think they would really, I don't know, I think they really dig it and, yeah, it was just really cool. Um, for sure, Jocelyn Blaski, we're gonna try to send her down there to meet with the early, um, childhood family educators, our teachers, so, and then, let's see, we received a whole bunch of resources from Rachel too, which is like, uh, odd sense because, I don't know, it was hard to find resources on a lot of these things in handbooks, so she's been really a good asset to have our team over here, so it's been good. Um, and then upcoming classes, we have water fitness coming up on Wednesday and then Mondays, November twenty-fourth, December first, and December eighteenth. And then coming up in December, which is crazy to say because it's almost Christmas, um, we have snowmobile safety on a Saturday and then we have a winter crafting class, which Angela Scholter's gonna run again and it's a rustic snowman and that's December ten. And then ECAB, we have twenty-four families enrolled in ECAB right now, which is pretty good, like it's a really good turnout. Um, and then we have an upcoming Letters to Santa event on December fourth, from five to six-thirty, or there'll be different stations down the West End, so we're looking forward to it. And then as a side thing, I have a little passion project right now in community that I'm trying to collect enough interest to have a ski team here, so hopefully, gonna be able to... I don't know, I have some kids, elementary skiing team, yes. I have some students who are interested in coming back because I'm like, Molly, that's what we kinda wanna do, so I'm gonna try to create them a little club.
Have a beach start to polar pullers?
Yeah, because I wanted a ski clinic for younger, like, elementary students, so I think I'm gonna run that too, um, I don't know, just kinda gather more interest in the sport because it's like we have, I have some beautiful ski trail right next to us, so...
That's great.
That's kind of my little side project in community development, so, okay.
Thanks, Molly.
Thank you. Thanks a lot, Molly.
Tim?
You guys wanna me to read it or you guys just wanna read yourselves?
Oh, we love to hear it.
We gotta get it read, you guys, station.
Here, you can, you, you guys can have those, yes. Well, I, I'm gonna just start off by saying I'm not mad at Molly or, or Missy for trying to get me more work to do. But I do appreciate them, uh, Missy kinda took the ball and ran with this robotics thing. Um, she, I'm not sure how it all got started, but I'm glad she's doing it. Um, and of course with the ski team, Molly's on me just about every day about, "We need to get this thing going, we need to get this thing going," and I'm like, I understand, so. So, we're, we're working on it because we want all the kids to have those, those opportunities. So, please understand that I'm behind these things, but I appreciate their help on it as well. The Bronco volleyball team, uh, going over the past fall season, uh, they finished their season eleven and thirteen. Their head coach, Aaron Hollander, nineteenth season. Also coaching this season was Tennyson Omdall with the JD team, Daniel Whitbeck with the C team, Peyton Zon with the seventh grade, and Cindy Heigle and Emily Nicholson with the eighth grade. The same exact coaching staff that they had last year. Um, the season finished up with about fifty-five players on those four, or excuse me, those five teams. The elementary volleyball program was coached by Sarah Peterson, Emily Nicholson, Kim Olafman, Kristy Levine, Julie Anderson, Addison Longer, and Janet Humbert. I hope I didn't miss anybody. Numbers continue to be strong at that level, there was fifty-five of, uh, or fifty-six somewhere around for those three, uh, grades, three through six. Cross-country team had twenty-four athletes this fall, were coached by Cheryl Anderson in her fourth season and new assistant coach, Lexie Erickson. She's very busy being the assistant coach for three sports, uh, this year. The team held their high plank on October fourteenth and thanks to the coaches, athletes, custodians, who got the course ready here at the high school. Again, uh, number of teams down a little bit this year because of the flatness of the course. Hopefully someday we'll be able to find someplace to fill again. The girls swimming and diving team had another successful season. They went six and two in their duel meets, six-year head coach, JJ McBride, and their assistant coaches, Ashley Mitchell and Haley Silver's led the teams. They had twenty-five girls out this season for swimming and diving. Those numbers continue to just keep creeping up a little bit. Every year it gets to be a little bit more. Ashley and Haley, they coached third through sixth grade girls. Uh, we had a third grade... they coached 3rd through 6th grade girls. We had a 3rd grade recreation swimming for the girls and the boys this year. They tried to see if we can get a couple more kids out there and get them interested. And they had right around a dozen swimmers. Football, the Bronco football team finished their season 5-4 under 60-year head coach Seth Edistad. They had 35 players in grades 9 through 12. Again, that number up a little bit from last year. I think last year was 32. The assistant coaches were Jake Edistad, Dennis Sitke, Jared Koschik, Brandon Barris, Norm Nelson, and Christian Deverney. Those guys have pretty much been there for the last couple of years, but pretty consistent there. You always like that in your coaching staff. So it just makes it easier for the kids, that transition year after year. The football cheerleaders had another successful fall season as they had nine members under new head coach Emily Geddy. The J E football team was able to get in six games this season. And we're looking at maybe cutting back that next year with N E A messing with our schedules next year. I'm not sure if you're aware, but season, fall seasons start late, as late as they possibly can. But N E A stays early. So they'll be playing two Wednesday games in a row next year. And screw up the volleyball schedules, cross country schedules. Anyway, just so you're aware that we'll probably only be down to five J E games next year because of that. The junior high football team was able to participate in seven contests. They had 25 players out. Haven't had 25 players out for years. And I think that has a lot to do with tackle bar football, starting in the 5th and 6th grade. Dylan Holt and Shane Donner were the coaches, the 5th and 6th grade football team. They against, again, played tackle bar football this fall. They had 28 players out, 13 in the 6th grade and 15 in the 5th grade, if I remember correctly. They were coached by Ross Ham, Zach Pearson, Lake Larson, Troy Freeburg, Brad Kokevich. They were actually able to play two games this year. We went to Warroad and they came over here to play us very competitive games and worked out very well. The 3rd and 4th graders played football again. They had just 21 players. That's a little concerning. I haven't seen 3rd graders came out this year. I'm not sure if that has to do with small class sizes or what was there. But we'll try to do better next year. They did get to play in Northwoods, home and away. They got to play down at Bronco Stadium. And they were coached by Augie Schnitz on bowls and green bowls. The J E volleyball team just completed their season under head coach Ariana Zaropka. They had five kids participating this fall. And I know that the varsity team is getting warmed up and ready to go for their winter season. The Bronco bowling team, under head coach Ralph Ruhl, they're going back to the state meeting again. Seems like a broken record. Get saved that way. But that kind of, almost were expecting them. They didn't, what? Yeah, they're going again. And I know they had a very successful season. So congratulations to them. Schools math team started competing again. Had their first meet a couple of weeks ago. 14 kids out there being mathletes. We appreciate them under coach Alex Manasa. Some thank yous, of course, to Jody and Christina down in the office, the number of trips I make out there with questions about this, that, and the other thing. And of course, Beth and Missy over here at the high school now, and Donnie and Orlando there to answer questions. It seems like they're picking their minds all the time. Jeremy Anderson, I can't believe the, obviously the schedule he's putting on and the custodial staff and with the transportation staff. Lots of stuff going on there. Lots of trips. We're very, very busy. The game workers, again, this fall, extensive. We've already started the winter seasons, finding enough penalty box workers and everything is, is lengthy. But we can't have those games without those people stepping up and do what they do. The kids had a pretty successful fall as far as things go. Obviously, some bumps on the road. That's always going to be the case. But I thought we did a great job. And I, I see that written down here as fans, the football team lost on Tuesday night. Wednesday night, the girls are playing in Two Harbors. Who shows up in Two Harbors? Like nine or 10 football players all dressed up. They had the crowd going crazy. It went five sets. It was awesome. The boys from Two Harbors and the band were there. They were giving each back and forth, all in a good nature. It was awesome. So I really appreciate those guys and everything that goes on during the season. And of course, a thank you to the coaches. The number of hours is insane. And we're expecting more and more of them because it's becoming a 365 day a year job. It just, it never ends with the fundraising and going to meetings and getting this done and talking to your kids and keeping them interested. So big thanks to them. Of course, our winter seasons are almost all underway. Basketball got, the boys' basketball started today. Girls' basketball and boys' hockey started last week. Of course, we had the I R C boys' hockey jamboree here. About 10 hours of madness, it seemed like, with hockey teams coming to town and there were pucks flying everywhere. And it seemed like the kids and the teams got what they needed. Of course, the girls' hockey team already has two hockey games under their belt. They played at home last Thursday. And they have a home game this Friday. Boys' swimming and diving, of course, starts next Monday. One act play. They've got their list of kids that have signed up. Speech is coming right around the corner. They talked about knowledgeable. Of course, we've got cheerleaders for boys and girls' basketball. It's, uh, uh, boys' basketball and boys' hockey, excuse me. And of course, we talked about robotics and robotics skiing. And of course, we're looking for an esports coach. So if anybody that's up there is listening or watching this and you're interested in esports, we would love to have you because we've got about 10 kids that are interested in being in esports. Ted? One other thing Beth asked me, oops, sorry.
May I ask you to clarify esports in case someone's listening?
So esports is basically gaming on, it would be on the computer. So they would play and don't, because this is kind of out of my wheelhouse on this one. Super Mario, Smash Brothers, chess is one of the games. Yeah, there's some other ones there. Fortnite. Casey's over there smiling on that.
He's a good kid.
He's an esports coach. There you go.
Like Rocket League, Mario Kart.
Mario, see, there you go.
So anyone good at that should sign up to coach.
Yep, should, yep. We need, we need somebody to kind of advise them along the way. So and be there to sign them up and get everything going. And the preseason's kind of started. The regular season starts actually December 1. So two weeks from today is the start of the regular season. So everything's kind of set up. Most of the kids are registered. Now we just need somebody to be there to make it happen. Thank you, Casey.
You see, they can't do it without you.
Yeah.
And I can tell you, the kids are inquiring about it. Today, we had two kids reach out. So I think there's another component of another area that kids are interested in that maybe we wouldn't see in football or hockey or volleyball. So it's, it's kind of creating an element of excitement.
That's great.
Yeah. Wonderful.
Casey?
And I don't want to get too long into here, but I do want to mention this. Beth asked me to talk about 9th grade governance. Just to give you guys some background, the Minnesota State High School League for how many ever years has only covered the 10th through 12th graders. So technically, 9th graders weren't under the insurances and everything else. In the last eight months, the vote went through, I think, I think it was like 97% to 3% for passage, that the 9th graders would be covered now under the Minnesota State High School League through insurances and all that stuff. Well, of course, it's created some other dynamics. Because for example, we had an arranged conference, junior high track and field meet. There was a 6th and 7th grade. There was an 8th and 9th grade one. Now your 9th graders can't compete with the 7th and 8th graders because they're not Minnesota State High School League athletes a lot of times. And now 6th graders have never been uncovered under the state high school league. And of course, that has stopped that. So it has started to create some thoughts and people, and I want to say this in the best way, are kind of trying to make sure that we're all following the same rules. And of course, there's A Ds who have opinions about which way those things should be. And so it really, we had an A D's meeting two weeks ago down in Chisholm. And so people came in with some ideas. And a lot of people said, no, that's not going to work for us. And a lot of it has to do with paying coaches. If they're a state high school league sport, they should be paid differently than if they're a rec sport. And Beth and I have been talking about this. So for example, this fall, Jenica Whitbeck was the C team coach. And we paid her what I would call a Minnesota State High School League salary because she was now coaching kids that were under the Minnesota State High School League salary rather than rec. This winter, I'm looking, hopefully, we're going to have, we've got enough boys' basketball players out that we really need to have a C team coach.
Oh, wow.
We need to find somebody to do that. I've yet to see an application for that. And practice starts today. And so we're kind of, whatever, we've got 34 boys, 33 boys now signed up to play basketball. We've never had 33 boys basketball players in, I don't know how many years it's been.
That's great.
So it's great excitement that we've got kids out. Like I said, these numbers and these, and these programs continue to go up. But that poses the problem for your guys is, Anna, how are we going to pay for these people? At the same time, junior high sports and the individual sports like cross country, swimming, track and field, and, oh, and golf. Now that these people are considering eliminating junior high, there will be no junior high meets. So swim meets, we haven't had junior high meets for the swim at a regular meet in years and years. While the kind of the consensus at our meeting two weeks ago was there will probably never be junior high swimming ever again. Everybody's going to be a Minnesota State High School League athlete, 7th through 12th. Cross country, same thing, 7th through 12th. Everybody's going to be either varsity or J E. There won't be any more junior high races run when you go to a cross country meet. There'll be possibly a C team, but not a junior high. And so again, that begs the question about how much are they getting paid in salary schedule? And I know I've talked with, with the union and I've talked with Beth about we need, we need some, we need some steps. And so it's something that we're working on here. This is definitely a work in progress. I'm not saying this is black and white. And what I told you tonight is the end all, end all. But the individual sports are going to probably be treated differently than say basketball. Basketball probably will always have 7th and 8th grade basketball teams, junior high teams that will be considered non-Minnesota State High School League. But 9th through 12th, those kids are going to be considered for the team sports, at least those sports are going to be considered state high school league. And then you won't have for those 7th and 8th graders. So Beth, just wanted me to kind of put that out to you and see if you have any questions. And I'm not saying I can answer them truthfully or honestly because we can go to the next meeting and it could be very different. Or people could feel different. Like I know one team, one school came to the meeting and said, for basketball, we're going A, B, C, no junior high. And everybody's like, whoa, 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 whoa. That's not going to work for us because we've got an A, B, and a C team already. And what are we going to do?
Yeah, that's going to be hard.
So, you know, the bigger schools and the little schools are, there's some opposition there about where we're going to go and what's right and what's going to happen there. So I just want you guys to be aware that there's some changes coming. And like I said, with payment of coaches and what coaches are going to be considered and licensures and those kinds of things. And, you know, 7th and 8th graders not practicing with the 9th through 12th, for example, in track and field. 7th and 8th graders not, no more practicing with the 9th through 12th. If they're considered non-state high school league kids, they shouldn't be at a state high, high school league practice. So.
So who, how is this going to come down to a final decision? Do you have any idea?
You know, the scary part about the rocks is this. Every area is going to possibly be very different because in the Twin Cities, they don't have junior high sports. All their kids are run through some rec program through the Y M C A or whatever else. So those schools down there, their 9th through 12th, they don't, they don't have 7th and 8th grade. They don't worry about the 7th and 8th graders. Those, those, those come in another different pile of kids. They got so many middle schools and everything else. So they only worry about them when they walk in the door for 9th through 12th. So I would guess our area might treat it one way. You go west with the Warroads and the Rosos, they might treat it differently. You go south, you know, obviously every area might have a different. And so it's going to be an interesting dynamic. And like I said, how long is it going to take for it all to shake out? And, you know, people who say, well, state high school is overstepping their bones and they went and did this and they shouldn't have done that, and all that other stuff. And like I said, it's been a learning process. And the, I mean, the A D's having meetings and discussing about, well, this is the way we're interpreting it. And this is best for us, but that's not best for them people. It's, it's difficult.
Right. Both are.
Anything else? Questions? Thanks.
Thank you.
Beth, yeah. So I have, come on. So I have the privilege tonight of tenuring two of our teachers, our wonderful teachers, Mrs. Koenig and Mrs. Bernard. Mrs. Bernard is a kindergarten teacher at Falls Elementary. And Mrs. Koenig is now a 6th grade teacher at Falls Elementary. Tonight, I'm recognizing that they have met all the requirements for I S D 361 to become tenured on behalf of the district. They've met the requirements of the Minnesota Department of Education. And they have fulfilled their obligation for their evaluation process. So tonight, we proudly recognize Mrs. Koenig and Mrs. Bernard for their dedicated service and meaningful contributions to Independent School District 361. Your commitment to our students and community is truly appreciated. On behalf of Mrs. Koenig tonight, I just want to tell you a little bit about Mrs. Koenig. She has not only been a pillar of a parent through our district community for many years. Her family is very entrenched in what I would say, being a Bronco, a committed family overall. From a classroom teacher to a coach to now a prom advisor, fax teacher, 6th grade interventionist, Shelley has really committed herself to the district and to what I would say are youth throughout international halls. One of her colleagues described her as somebody who's extremely dedicated. She is patient, works with children, and really makes sure that they know that they, they have the potential to be successful in and out of school. One of the things I really love about Shelley is she is the same person inside a school that you see outside of school. She has a human element to her that I think is really nurturing and provides kids a safe space to be the person that they were meant to be. And that's one of the reasons we moved her to a 6th grade classroom, even though I don't know if she was 100% happy about that. You know, she is just somebody that we felt needed to lead a classroom. And what she has shown us in just a few months, that she has been at the forefront of leading a classroom. Mrs. West, so the other day, you know, she's extraordinary with what she does. And I'm really glad to have her in the classroom. So Shelley, on behalf of I S D 361, we want to thank you for your years of service. And we are so proud that you teach and are a part of the school district team. Next, I would like to introduce Mrs. Bernard. Is your family here still? Brittany, I, I feel like I've watched her growing up. And now she is a wonderful teacher within our district. Brittany and her family are also former Broncos. So it's always quite nice to be able to introduce somebody who's a former Bronco. I've had the privilege of observing Brittany as a new superintendent. And I can tell you, what I see firsthand from her is somebody who's truly loving, who's compassionate. And she is really all things P B I S and Bronco pride. The way she interacts with our littlest Broncos, our littlest scholars is quite something to see in action. And I think when you know that Brittany is your classroom teacher, you know that your kids are in a very safe and welcoming space. She's very inclusive, but she's also very compassionate and kind. Because our littlest learners, their five-year-olds, they're who are in our classroom. And what we see from Brittany in the classroom is really a safe space. And I think she sets the foundation. As somebody who is that first snapshot of education, to have Brittany in that classroom teaching our kids about who they are as individuals, and then also start building that academic foundation. I think we should be very grateful that she is on our educational team. So Brittany, your colleagues couldn't say enough about you. But they think you are just a gem of a human being. So on behalf of I S D 361, thank you and congratulations on your tenure. So if your chair is going to step out to take a picture, if you want to take a break or move to committee reports, you can do that.
So policy committee, we haven't met yet. We're going to start putting.
This one's still working.
Policy committee, we are going to start adding policies hopefully next meeting, depending on how long it's going to be. But other than that, just normal stuff. Athletic committee?
Yep, we have quite a bit of updates, but not, nothing big was decided. And we talked again about the athletic trainer. And Beth was going to do some follow-ups on that. We talked about rink rats with Mr. Ringhofer. He had some kids that were interested in rink rats. We were going to have him reach out to M H S and student council and get more information on if they had volunteers or not that wanted to do it.
I did.
You did? Okay, perfect. We talked about evaluation forms for coaches and looking at them again for the 26, 27 year. Kind of updating them to align more with M S H S L guidelines and our Bronco handbook. We also talked about the athletic handbook, which I believe is on the agenda to approve. So we made some progress there. Some other little notes, we talked about with a board member leaving, now we need somebody for M S H S L. As a representative, we talked about sports fees. We noticed some, some places they weren't balanced, in case any parents saw, between infant and campus and arbitrary. I guess I would suggest that if you've seen that your kid has a fee online and you know you've paid it, to maybe call and talk because there was an issue, I guess, where things were missed as they switched systems. We also talked about looking at complaint processes and procedures and updating some handbooks for bullying and harassment in our athletics handbook. More information in 26, 27. We're going to look at that a little bit more. little bit more. We also talked about, um, donations. Um, I guess there's been a large volume of donations hitting community members and a lot of the same businesses over and over. So we're wondering what we could do to help, um, kind of rein that in. So that's no, no decisions were made, but that's also something that needs to be looked at. Um...
You mean the teams going out and asking for donations?
Well, like people going to the same businesses over and over. The businesses are being hit really hard, the same ones. So, um, and a lot of them, you know, it'll be like one team going, then another team not knowing they went. So then another team went there and yeah, you know, and so on. So we talked, you know, how can we rein that in? We need to talk about that some more as well. Um, and along with that kind of goes our booster clubs. Um, we're looking at, um, what guidelines are out there for them and do all of them have the proper, um, procedures in place that they should be following? You know, are they all truly registered as nonprofits and things like that? Uh, so more to come on that as well. And we also talked about departure times in and out, that we need to look at that a little bit more in 26, 27. Um, for example, things like guidelines, um, a coach wanting to get the team out early versus do they really need to leave that early to get there in time? Um, stuff like that, just so there's more consistency on when they can leave and thresholds for coming in late the next morning, depending how late they're out. So more to come on that in 26, 27 as well.
May I ask what's rink rats you said? Did you say rink rats?
Rink rats? Um, it would be like the kids that were looking at it, I guess, um, we would have to define it, what they were going to do, but they would help out with things like, you know, taking the nets off the ice. We also talked about maybe they could help out with things at the football field, stuff like that. So nothing set in stone, just some, some people had came to Tim and asked if we had any rink rats. And then we kind of talked about it and said, maybe that's an opportunity for our kids that need volunteer hours, like student council and MHS. So.
Okay, cool.
Uh, anything else for athletic? Uh, legislative, Rox?
Yeah. Um, well, there have been some questions. I talked with Tim Ringhofer about this. There are, first I guess I should ask, how many people read the last, um, email that I sent out about coffee and conversation? Did you guys? So a lot of this is going to be reviewed for you guys, but for anyone out there, it won't be. But there are questions regarding, uh, transgender individuals and rules under the Minnesota House High School League versus the federal government. So, so far, nothing's changed and, and, uh, so it was just brought up at the MSBA legislative discussions. And also, um, it was brought up that some schools in northern Minnesota have had safety concerns, safety problems around the entry time into the school in the mornings, having people come in that don't belong there, fighting occurring and stuff. We've been very, very lucky, but it's something that should, that was brought up to make people aware. Um, also, uh, regarding cell phone policies, um, you know, the state doesn't have a policy. North Dakota does, no, no, uh, cell phones in all of Minnesota, or North Dakota schools. But cell phone policies vary in school districts and so I just emailed out some of the different ideas that people had brought up, what works, what doesn't. Um, the last thing is, um, kind of, uh, the delegate assembly for MSBA will be reviewing all the resolutions that were sent in by various school districts in December. However, here's the sad news. It looks like the one that our board submitted, which I, I did a lot of the paperwork for it with Ginger Christiansen's help regarding reducing paperwork for early childhood special ed. And, um, the reason that I wanted to focus on that particular category was that, uh, having a lot of experience with it and knowing a lot of other special ed teachers, it appears that early childhood special ed has, uh, even more paperwork required than other categories of special ed. So I, I submitted a ton of examples and was so excited, but you know what? They divided the resolutions into categories and unfortunately what it, what I believe our, uh, resolution is going into is a category called, um, "MSBA continues to advocate for this general concept" and thanks for your input. Oh my gosh, I worked so hard on that. It's still going to be on, in the pile of, uh, resolutions, but it, it was very disappointing to hear that. I'll keep on pushing for things like that, but that's all I have.
Well, thank you for your work though.
Yes, you're welcome.
All right, we will move on, uh, to the consent agenda. Uh, do I have a motion?
Oh, sorry. I totally forgot. You and he stepped out and I was going.
Hi, I just have a few things that I want to go over tonight. I want to give you a brief up, update. Um, we'll have a short presentation on the, the construction phases at our December meeting. They're putting together a presentation for me right now, but they're also putting together a short video set that we can put out to the public. So that's going to go on our, um, social media and on our website. So stay tuned for that. I do know that we have something happening at every building throughout our district. So, you know, the excitement is in the air, but also the safety concerns, right? We're seeing big equipment come through. Um, we're seeing a lot of construction people come through. So we're making sure that we're doing what we need to do at the entry points of our schools. Um, but also even with some of the big equipment that has come to our, um, surprise at Bronco Arena, we have noticed that we have to do some shifting, especially over the jamboree weekend. We weren't quite prepared for that. So our, our district, um, facilities director, um, Mr. Anderson, he has been phenomenal in making things happen really fast. But we've asked for a little bit more insight to when some of this major equipment's coming so we can plan appropriately to make sure that when we have our school days and when we have athletics and activities that we're adequately prepared with signage, barriers and things that we need to do at our end. So stay tuned for an update. Um, as I find out there's big changes happening, I will push that information out to the board. But right now we do have something happening on every site. That was part of the referendum and things are going well. We have a few hiccups, um, by MDE, but Nexus is handling those. And we're also seeing the same thing with MDE with our solar grant and, um, Ziegler is handling that. But there's always those small bumps that come in the road and we have to just work around them as they, they arise. We have, I guess the biggest area that I want to talk about tonight is we have done some pretty extensive school, school safety and security work, um, behind the scenes. We just met a couple of weeks ago. We had a team of administrators and local department leads, our transportation and facilities director. We met with MDE. We did a walkthrough on the day that we were closed, uh, I think it was last Monday. And the MDE state, um, department came up and just did a walkthrough of our building. And we started looking at doorways. We looked at windows. We looked at the construction of, of the layout of our district and they spent about two hours with us. Uh, local law enforcement, um, agencies were also with us at the table. We talked about collaborating and what we need to do, whether it is a medical emergency or a critical violent incident. And so we had some great conversation and one of the things that came out of that, and you're going to see a lot of local area just, school districts, we want to make sure we're all on the same page. We're all using the same language, calling into the same numbers, um, making sure lines are free, what are transportation, uh, pathways look like. So they have taken all of the information and data that our team gave them in addition to their, their specs based on their walkthroughs. They're going to be giving us a present, a virtual presentation. So I will, um, welcome a few board members to attend that, but I know that that day is going to happen. It will all be virtual. I will invite, um, some of you to the, I think there is a safety policy group or a safety committee and we will invite you to that. So we can take a look at some of the feedback from the state. In addition, um, I have been working with, uh, Willie Koschik. Uh, he is leading some work for the local area schools. So it would be inclusive of Little Fork, Big Falls. It is, um, North Home and then International Falls Public Schools. He is working with the Arrowhead Region Emergency Management Association. I've provided you with that handout tonight for you to review. We, he has been, um, invited to be a part of a state grant that they are coming up. This team is coming up and what they are doing is they are doing, um, digital mapping of school districts. So we have the opportunity to participate in that. So all of these digital maps will go to all emergency services. So then in the event there is a medical emergency, a critical response, anything of that sort, the administrator or the emergency professionals would have digital access. So they would be able to see any points within the school district that are in need of urgent attention. And so they will be able to look at that from an emergency standpoint versus having to talk directly with our, our administrative assistants because you never know who might be available during an incident. And we know that from, uh, last month when we had a medical emergency on our campus, you need certain people, um, to be monitoring the situation when something comes up. So we're very excited that, um, Mr. Officer Koschik, um, participated in this and he has invited the local school districts to be a part of this. Uh, the fire department was at the table, um, the police department, the sheriff's department. And so he's also working with the local hospitals. So we feel very fortunate to be part of that. So what will happen is this team will come up. They will spend time working with our school district administrators. They'll work with myself and they'll also talk to our facilities director and then we will start the process into being a part of the emergency response, digital mapping for the school district. As information, um, comes up and more information is, uh, delivered on that, I will let you know that the person leading that work is the emergency management coordinator. He is, it is Willie Koschik for our area. So very grateful for the work that he's done with our school district and, um, surrounding school districts. Next, um, Lisa, Missy and I, um, in addition to Linnea, who is actively seeking safety and security and mental health and behavior grants for our district, we will be going to Grand Rapids for a behavioral threat assessment training, um, that's being offered. This is a very unique opportunity. Um, as you know, we're seeing mental health and behavior really increase across the country and in society as a whole, but also within the realm of education. And we're seeing the needs become greater and we're seeing the, the impact on kids as young as five. So one of the things that is going to happen is our administrative team is going to be going to, um, Grand Rapids with other local area school districts, but also, um, I have invited the local emergency responders to go down. So we are all again speaking the same language. So we're going to be attending that training in January and we look forward to the opportunities and information that we're going to be able to bring back to our district, um, and our safety team at that time. Next, one of the things that we, uh, felt was very important, um, based on our Alice training, is that we wanted to make sure that our classrooms and our office spaces had safety buckets. So we have, um, invested in our safety buckets for our classrooms and our offices. Those have arrived. So now we are getting ready to fill those. So every classroom and office within the district has a safety bucket. So our students and staff have access to those in the event we had to go into a lockdown for medical or emergency. So our team is continuously, um, building that, which leads me to, it is a priority grant focused area for us because as we know, our, our dollars that are tied to public education can be very limited in what we receive and, um, what we have access to spending for. So Linnea is actively working on our safety and security, um, measures for grant access right now. And she is partnering with us to be able to provide good narratives. So she'll be traveling with Lisa, Missy and I as we go out to some of these trainings. So she'll provide accurate documentation for her grant narratives. Right now we are waiting on our community schools grant. Um, Missy is waiting on some grant information for the high school in some areas that she's working on. We are also waiting on the Rotary Grant to see if they are going to, um, approve a grant that we've applied for to enhance and expand our west end playground. So it becomes a community playground. So when we have outdoor activities and we have summer programming, we have a, a nice up-to-date, um, playground that is also immediate compliant. That's really important to us to make sure we have an inclusive playground that all of our students can play on. We just applied for a grant, uh, called Healthy Water Stations. So one of the things we know, um, the state is really looking at lead levels within school districts. So one of the things that we are really actively working on is making sure that we're applying for grants where we can put in water stations. That's not just a drinking fountain, but it's filtered or bottle filling station. So, um, Linnea has currently applied for some of those for our school district. Our family gender neutral bathroom for the pool wing will be completed by the second week of December. Um, that is something that we didn't have on our pool wing. So we're very excited about that. It's beautiful. If you get a chance to walk down there, they're being ready to put the final touches on that in the week ahead. Next, negotiations have really been halted until we found out where we were going to go with our health insurance. Um, we did get all of the information back and the district did a vote. They have voted on the PEEP renewal. So you're going to see that on the board agenda. So we already have partners with PEEP and we will be, um, presenting to the board tonight for renewal of a four-year contract with PEEP. CISO will be joining us next month, um, for our December board meeting where we will have our truth and taxation hearing that will be presented to the board. Um, we'll talk about any adjustments that we're going to have to make in the budget, um, based on how the first half of the year has gone. In addition to, they are working on comprehensive budgets for each school, community education, athletics and certain divisions. So each person will have their budget at their fingertips. Last but not least, I just want to say, I think you can tell, I was going to highlight a few things, but I think you can tell by what has happened and been presented by our AD to community ed and our school principals, there is a, a culture of excitement around here. Um, we have some really great things that our administrators are working on behind the scenes. Um, their work is not for faint of the heart. Their hours that they put in are excessive and I just, I really appreciate the efforts on behalf of everybody who's, who's leading a department right now. One of the things I, I guess I just want to say is, you know, I know that there can be a lot of change happening and we're trying to shift the paradigm of what a school district looks like. It doesn't mean good work has not been done. But what we are really talking about is how do we continue to keep the kids that we have as students who attend or could attend ISD 361? And are we offering, offering programming that is engaging, rigorous, inclusive, and most importantly, creates a culture of, of joy? Um, when we go to work, we want to feel joy. And I think when we, we have to look through the same lens of not just an adult who is a classroom teacher or a principal or superintendent, but look through the eyes of a six-year-old, look through the eyes of a 16-year-old. And we also have to make sure we're aligning our, our roadmap in 21st century learning experience. And just because we're a real school district, doesn't mean we can't offer great things. And so I'm really appreciative to the, the research and, um, investment that our, our leaders and our staff are making overall. So I appreciate the school board being willing to look at, um, change and it, it's very exciting, I think, in, in what the future holds for ISD 361. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right. Now we will move to the consent agenda. Uh, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
One second.
All right. Uh, motion by Jessica and second by Tina to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion?
I just want to add a number three. You'll, um, the past minutes, you'll see that it says principal, Jermaine instead of superintendent. So there's been a striking change there.
And then I also want to just, um, the original, uh, agenda that went out, uh, teacher Angela Schwartz, it said ECFE. It is now updated to ECSV. ECSV teacher.
Early Childhood Special Ed.
All right. Anything else? All right. Um, motion by Jessica and second by Tina to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried. All right, we will move to action items. Improving systems and structures to create a culture where all are welcome and supported. Uh, resolution of acceptance and gifts. Whereas school board policy 706 establishes the guidelines for the acceptance of gifts or donations to the district. Whereas the International Falls School District Board encourages the support of the district's educational programs through gifts or donations that meet the goals and objectives of the school district. Whereas Minnesota statute 465.03 states the school board may accept a gift, grant or devise of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be it resolved, the school board of International Falls Public School, ISD 361 accepts with appreciation the following gifts, donations or grants received by the school district. And do I have a motion?
I'll make that, Rox.
One second.
Motion by Rox and second by Dale. Set motions. By Susan and Stuart Nordquist, Bronco Hall of Fame, $2,000. True Star Federal Credit Union, sixth grade field trip, $2,000. Border Bank, sixth grade field trip, $200. Elks and Community Dinner Prom Donation, $500.
Elks and Community Dinner Prom Donation, five hundred dollars. Aggrecy Foundation First Robotics Team Donation, five thousand dollars. Jamie Connet FES Bag of Mittens, Parent Donation, FES Bag of Mittens. Joan Pearson FES Twenty Pairs of Mittens. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Whereupon the resolution was declared adopted. And now we will move to, um, approving the ISD three sixty-one PIP Health Insurance Renewal. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that, Rox.
Okay, motion by Rox, the second?
I'll second.
Second by Tina. All right, discussion? Any discussion? All right, so we have a motion by Rox and second by Tina to approve the ISD three sixty-one PIP Health Insurance Renewal. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Um, next is to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six Athletic and Activities Handbook. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Jessica and second by Tina. Any discussion? All right. A motion by Jessica and second by Tina to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six Athletic and Activities Handbook. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, um, approve the requested leave of absence for Michelle McDonald up to five years beginning twelve, one of twenty-five. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Motion by Dale.
I'll second.
Second by Jessica.
I would like to just, um, talk at this point, if that's okay?
Yeah.
So one of the things the board has to decide tonight is you have to decide, um, if you're going to approve the leave of absence and what will your number of years be for the approval. Um, Mrs. McDonald is, has asked for up to five years, um, and what has, what happens in this process is the board has to make a decision on, do you want to grant the five years or do you want to look at a different number based on, um, what is practiced across school districts? So I just wanted to bring that to your attention tonight. Leave of absences, um, are up to the school board through the contract, and one of the things that I just wanna recognize is I do support this leave of absence, um, just because the opportunity for Mrs. McDonald is she is, is going to be, um, providing the opportunity to work in a different setting of education, and that's one of the opportunities that we encourage people to do if they're looking at, um, career changes or investing in their education. So for tonight, I would, um, support the leave of absence for Mrs. McDonald, but as a school board, um, you can decide what the number of years would be.
Is that three years typical?
Three, three years is the, the average that you generally see across, um, school districts, um, three years, yes, that would be the, the norm of what you see for a leave of absence.
So why five?
Um, the contract states they can re- they can request up to five years, um, for a leave of the absence, um, but you can't leave for like a unilateral position. So for example, we would not, um, grant a leave if I was a fifth grade teacher to go into another school district in a fifth grade classroom.
Do you know what past has been? I know you probably don't, but I'm trying to think and I don't remember.
Past has usually been five years.
Has it?
And I do know when I spoke to, um, the union, um, you know, some leaves have been granted, some leaves have not, and, uh, this is, this is a decision the board makes, but I do, I do support this.
So what are the repercussions to the school district in terms of if you approve it for three years or if you approve it for five years? Is, I mean, so approving a leave of absence means she has a position here, right? For the amount of time that we?
Correct.
Grant.
Yep, and I don't know what past practice has looked like here, so that's not any guidance I could give you on based on what you've done, um, but what it does, it, it retains a spot should she determine that she wants to come back to the school district.
So we hire like a long-term sub?
No, we would fill the position, we would open the position up, we would hire, but in the event we had to make cuts or, you know, if she determined that she wanted to come back to the district, it could be possible that that person could stay on because they could go into, there's retirements every year.
Right, right.
Um, but it, it does give her a spot in the event she wants to come back, but she does have to let us know each year that she's approved for by the deadline, I think it's right around February.
Oh, okay.
She would have to know, let us know.
Is the spot, is it the specific job that she would come back to?
So anybody who takes a leave, leave of absence does not get their original spot back. They would go to an open position, um, so for example, if there is an open position at Falls Elementary School, that, that's the spot, um, based on what the administrators think for assignments for the year, um, but they're not guaranteed their actual same position that they left upon.
Okay. I guess five years is a long time to me. I, I mean, I would go with three. I, I was, for some reason, three, six in my head too, but, um, I don't know.
How often do we encounter this? It's my first time.
Oh, it's, it's periodically we have these. It's not rare.
Yeah, usually, I wanna say the, I'm trying to remember the last one that we had, but I wanna say it was like they asked for a year or something to go do some, uh, it was like a, a smaller and it was a specific amount of time for a specific purpose.
Right, and, and sabbaticals are different, which are usually a year or whatever, um, but yeah, um, I don't remember when, when we've had a five year, do you?
I do, she opted to not come back at that time.
After five, okay.
Yeah, so the process is they will have to let, um, their building principal or me know by a specific date, um, every year, so whether it's three years or five years, but then at the end of whatever the board approves for the timeline, they have to make a decision, yes or no, and then that leave would be closed out.
Well, and then I guess too, like whoever's filling that spot, you know, I, after three years, if you filled the spot, you kinda wanna know if you have a spot too.
Well, wouldn't that be, if you had, if you took the, if you were the replacement, then say you hired four more people along the three or five years or whatever you hired, then the person who took the spot for Mrs. McDonald would have some seniority already, so it's not necessarily works that way, but it does, it does, unless you never hired anybody else, then you would be the lone man on the toe of the pole. But, um, I guess, I don't know, I, how much of an inconvenience it puts on the district. Is there anything you can speak to, uh, do you have feelings on it, Beth, in terms of the inconvenience?
Well, I have, I have, you know, I can, I can give you the guidance based on what, um, we've, I've seen and worked with, um, have generally been around three years. Um, I can tell you that Mrs. McDonald has been a phenomenal teacher for our district. Um, she's a good teacher, very, very committed, uh, so I think, you know, I would, I would, I have to defer this to you, I can tell you as a superintendent, um, my experiences have been a three-year leave of absence, uh, the contract says up to five, um, so I think, you know, I don't know what past practice has looked like, and I do know that last year, I think we granted a leave, but the individual asked for a specific one-year leave of absence, um, so this, this ask does leave some room for, um, years, so I guess it would be at the recommendation of the board, but three years is about average.
Okay, uh, any other thoughts?
Well, I guess I'm somewhat, uh, well, I'm a little biased, I've been a recipient of both sabbatical and leave of absences, I've never had a five-year leave, I think I've always only taken one-year sabbatical, and I think I took one-year leave of absence to increase my, uh, teaching skills and getting different certifications. So I know how absolutely wonderful it is to have the opportunity to get a variance of your skills and your opportunities, I think that's wonderful. Um, I don't know what to say about number of years.
I think if it's not a negative impact in any way to the district, why wouldn't we give her the five?
That's my thought too.
Yeah, I mean, if that's what she's requesting, yeah.
So.
If it's not anything negative, we're hiring a teacher, that teacher is eligible, you know, to, they're a full, full-on hired member of staff, they, it's leaving them in any kind of limbo, she can come back.
She's not impacting anybody when she comes back.
Yeah, she's not, it's not hurting anybody, which I, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't approve the five.
Right.
I can't think of a downside, so if somebody can think of a downside, let me know.
She's going out there for a learning opportunity, so she might be, you know, bring something better.
Who knows what she's gonna bring back to the district, right?
Yeah.
No, I guess I have another question, so let's say, say year two, she's like, I don't, I know, I don't wanna come back now. Can she say that?
Yeah.
And let us know earlier that?
She would submit a letter to the board.
Okay.
And then we would put it on the agenda and approve that, so it can absolutely be adjusted.
Okay.
That's a great question.
All right. Any other? All right, okay, um, I have a motion by Dale and a second by Jessica to approve the requested leave of absence for Michelle McDonald up to five years beginning twelve, one of twenty-five. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Tina and second by Jess to adjourn the meeting at?
Six thirty-six.
Six thirty-six.